Very good. It's Carolyn and Jason online. Okay, very good. Okay, I'd like to call it a order, the Town of McCandless Meeting of Town Council for November twenty eighth. If you could all join us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. We start the same every meeting, our culture here, we will work together to better our town. We all have an equal voice. We may disagree, but we will do so with civility and respect. Is in the end, we are all neighbors. A few announcements to make, our second annual winter fest will take place on December third. More info on the town website. The town leaf pickup program, it has been extended through December second. I know we've had a record leaf fall early this year, so they were a little bit behind. Some things that aren't on here, the Heritage Center is having breakfast with Santa from nine to eleven. What day is that, Joe?
It's Saturday.
It's it's this Saturday, ten dollars per person, more details on our website. Then just my housekeeping thing, because the how the holidays fit in December, our meetings will be what the twelfth and the nineteenth. So those that are those make notes there. And then also, everyone knows that the Steelers started eight fifteen tonight, so let's try to get through this. Okay, now to the serious stuff. Public hearings, do you want to take these?
Yep, first, I would like to call it order the public hearing on tentatively identified ordinance fifteen twenty nine, twenty twenty three budget. And then we'll turn it over to this great house to make a presentation.
Give me one second. Good evening. So tonight's public hearing on the twenty twenty three budget is a this presentation is simply a recap of what we've had in the last two meetings workshops. The twenty twenty three consolidated budget six sits at twenty six point eight seven two million dollars. It is an increase of eleven percent over prior years amended budget. You can see the comparisons, there's a five percent increase in the general fund, there is a fifty nine percent increase in capital projects. A lot of that is due to the ARPA money and the spending of the town of spending it down for the town's benefit. This is the consolidated budget. There is one change as discussed from the last meeting, I have added fifty thousand dollars to general government as part of a general contingency that has increased the contributions from prior year fund balance also by fifty thousand, it is still within the transfer. Well within the transfer to CIP from the general fund. That fifty thousand dollars we have proposed that it would be at the discretion of the town manager, it sits in his department, so he alone would have access to it. And that it would be reported on on a quarterly basis to council. You can see the breakouts of the different departments for the general fund. Public safety sits at forty six percent, public works at twenty three. These are relatively consistent with prior year budgets, the one change that you'll see is the transfers to other funds at that twelve percent. The two point four million roughly that's being transferred to CIP is over and above what we normally transferred about two million bucks or less. The that increase is is seen in the CIP budget in total. It went up from roughly four million to roughly six million dollars in twenty twenty three. Here you can see the breakouts, this takes a portion of each of the CIP departments. So in general government, you see the two sidewalk programs. You see the improvement for the HVAC here at town hall. In addition to that, you will see a carryover in a budget amendment in the beginning of twenty twenty three. We anticipated when we developed the budget that we would have the windows at least contracted at this point. We anticipate that that will come into play in early twenty twenty three. It is included in the projections for this year for fund balance, so there will be no change in the totals. And for general government, I'm sorry, for public works under CIP, you see the purchase of the two dump trucks, the boom mower. You see the additions for the plows and spreaders. The traffic cameras, we are instituting an improvement for the police license plate readers on traffic cameras in the next couple of years. In addition to that, we have signal upgrades over the next five years, the town has over twenty nine intersections that we maintain that need to be updated on a schedule that rotates, otherwise we will see a large infrastructure investment in the coming year, it's better to spread it out over a five year plan, we anticipate receiving grant money for those projects, if they don't, if we don't receive those project grant monies, we would reduce the amount of expenditures with the outlay. Storm sewers and drains, the usual six hundred thousand dollars that goes along with the labor from our DPW crew that they come ahead of the road program replacing drains and culverts. You see there's a small improvement to Winchester as well as the large construction for blazer number one, this includes the full gunite replacement plus engineering costs. We've been anticipating this cost for about two years. The resurfacing and reconstruction of town roads is at one point two million, and this is roughly the same amount that was budgeted this year. And then you see the continuing costs for storm water management and flood control as part of the MS four program, what we're required to maintain for the permit. And then under parks and wrecks, we have some increases. We want to do some drainage improvements at wall and vestal. The wall park project that was postponed in twenty twenty two due to funding from the budget has been pushed to twenty twenty three, you see that that is funded by a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. Then we also are anticipating adding parks cameras to facilitate asset management in those areas. Again, just the consolidated budget. And this is where we are in the process. We have had the two workshops on the general fund and CIP. Tonight is the public hearing calling for public comment from citizens. They also have the opportunity to speak at public comment at the previous two workshop meetings. Then following tonight on December twelfth, which is the next council meeting, we will review any public hearing comments as well as approve the twenty twenty three budget, and then there will be salary reviews during the executive session. Any questions from council before we open it up? Yes, ma'am.
On that fifty thousand dollar contingency for town manager control?
Yes.
Would that include, or we could be able to, if there was ever overtime that's needed for extra removal of snow? Or like this past, I know we were got tons of complaints about the leaves. Would any of that money be able to be used for that?
The intention of that is is not for that, we budget overtime for the road department, public works already for for snow, for emergency situations, the the concept of this was the contingency account for possible basically the fact that there's some employees that could be offered other positions and the ability to maybe make an offer to keep them, along with looking at our master parks and trail plan that I'm hoping to get a grant for, but wanted to have that as a place to do that with.
Do we have sufficient funds in there for the removal of snow and extra picking out of leaves?
For snow, yes, for the, we do not budget for overtime for leaves and probably not something that we would start doing at any time. I mean, we have overtime in the public works departments budget.
So they could use it for essentially any.
For overtime, yeah, I mean, like there's it's it's budgeted there for overtime with an expectation with the usual snow and or callouts for other reasons and including, you know, callouts for trees down, things like that throughout the non-winter months.
Any other questions from council before we open it?
You, at this time, we will open it up for public comment with respect to the proposed budget ordinance. Are there any cases?
My name is Matthew Williams, the fire chief for the People's District Volunteer Fire Company for Town of McCandless.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your address.
It's thirteen ninety one Duncan Avenue, I'm representing the People's District Volunteer Fire Company. I'm here tonight on behalf of the People's Fire Company to ask for town council for a small modification to the twenty twenty three proposed town budget. Which will provide additional critical support to the Towns of Mercy Services organization. As you're aware, all three town fire companies were asked to submit a budget proposal for coming fiscal year and were given a five percent increase, which is the first increase we received over three years. In the face of the crushing inflation, internationally rising operation costs, we have all demonstrated to you through disclosure of our financial records. We would like the town council to consider providing fuel for a additional support to the fire companies. Looking at the twenty twenty three proposed budget, you guys have estimated approximately nineteen thousand six hundred seventy five per year to fund fuel for fire companies, which represents a little less, you know, percent of the twenty one million dollar budget that you guys are looking to pass. Over the last three years since COVID, our calls have all increased dramatically with our volunteers not getting a break in between. This year, we are looking to set a record with running more than five hundred fire responses and over five hundred medical responses. So again, we were asking town council to again to look into possibly funding the additional fuel costs so that we could take those monies to put back into the services that we are offering to the community. Our apparatuses come to town functions for national night out, winter fest, community days, and called out to assist with road closures for the police department. So I thank you for your time tonight, and again, we'd like to see you guys consider doing a little bit more to help the party, party for us. So we break it down. We get cord, we get billed, I think quarterly now, so we're roughly paying between four to a thousand dollars a month on fuel, depending on the call numbers. I can say in the last three months, our calls, we are averaging eighty fire responses a month on top of roughly, you know, forty to fifty medical responses. So with that said, if you break it down per month, it's an additional almost twenty thousand dollars that would be added to the fire company's funding. So you're looking for twenty thousand dollars more in fuel, yes.
And that would just be for Peoples?
I'm speaking on behalf of Peoples.
So but that would just be for Peoples, would be all the, all the.
I believe the numbers are, when we look, break it down, it's roughly, yeah, for for all three, but. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Any further public comment? Are there any online comments?
No.
If anyone's new to online, if you want to speak, just put your name and the chat box and address and we can send you a a microphone request, so.
No.
Okay, all right, with that being said, no other comments, that we will close the public hearing on ordinance number fifteen twenty nine to twenty twenty three budget. Next, we'll move on to our second public hearing of the night, this is a public hearing on tentatively identified ordinance number fifteen thirty, amending article three three seven point oh two real estate tax. To amend the discount penalty provisions of the town's code ordinances. Getting this great house, I know it has a short presentation to give us all a quick education on what Act fifty seven is all about.
Good evening again, if I can get my mouse to click on this, it'll be in good shape. Yeah, Act fifty seven, real estate tax ordinance update, we have first and foremost, this is a Pennsylvania delegated change, they have requested that municipalities put this into effect between October and January of this year. Let me say first off, this is not a millage increase, there is no change in the milit tax millage for the town of McCandless, this is strictly a change applicable to the first tax bill following the purchase of a real estate parcel. And the taxpayer is responsible for completing the waiver per the PA Department of Community and Economic Development form. Quickly, again, let me say this is not a real estate property tax millage increase, the town's millage rate will remain at one point two three six mills. On September thirteenth, PA Act fifty seven required all municipalities that levy real estate taxes to adopt a resolution or ordinance directing their tax collector to implement its provisions. Again, like I mentioned, municipalities have through January ninth to adopt a resolution or an ordinance based on this PA directive. Based on the existing wording wording of the town of McCandless codified ordinances, the rates of discount penalties established shall be effective for subsequent years unless changed by ordinance, and so therefore we have proposed a change in that ordinance. The change is only applicable to the first tax bill following the purchase of a real estate parcel. The Pennsylvania Act fifty seven amends the local tax collection law, providing for new homeowners to receive a waiver for the property tax penalty charges if they did not receive a bill notice within the first year of owning a property. Additionally, the act provides that tax collectors will not be personally liable in acting in good faith. So in this case, for McCandless, the school district passed a resolution, we will pass an ordinance. It will affect taxpayers the first year they buy a new parcel. And it alleviates any liability of the tax collector for relieving the penalties on the taxpayer. So the school district can't come back and tell our tax collector that she should have collected penalties. It kind of puts that out there that this is allowable. And that's why they're requiring everyone to pass a resolution or ordinance. It is the taxpayer's responsibility to request the waiver from the tax collector and complete a series of steps per the PA Department of Community and Economic Development form. The form is available online, we'll have it here at town hall. They can pick it up, the taxpayer must attest, they did not receive a written notice of real estate taxes imposed by the applicable taxing districts. They have to sign off that they didn't receive a county bill, a municipality or school district bill. They must request the waiver of additional charges. In this case, it's interest fees and penalties in excess of the face amount of the tax notice, they are still responsible for the face value of the tax. They must file within twelve months of the qualifying event, i.e. the date of transfer of ownership. And the taxpayer must attach a copy of the deed showing the date of transfer. The taxpayer must also provide full payment of the face value amount on the tax notice. Very simple. Act fifty seven imposed by the state of Pennsylvania for all municipalities in the state. Does council have any questions?
Tricia, if I was to summarize, if you purchase a home in our community, and for some reason the tax bill gets way, didn't didn't get to you, you still owe the money, but all of the penalties and interest would be waived because they're new to our community and there might have been something.
Yes, the established calendar of the town allows for a discount period, a face value period and a penalty period. And then it goes to delinquent. So if you would perhaps realize you hadn't received your tax bill after the penalty period has started, you would come in, receive that waiver, attest to the tax collector, you had not received the bill, provide proof of the transfer of deed, sign the form, and then you will only have be liable for the face value of your tax notice.
And only for new.
It's only for new homeowners, it's only valid within the first twelve months of the transfer of the parcel.
Mike, just to clarify a little, say you buy a home and your mortgage company is responsible for making the payment for your taxes, and they fail to do it. You don't know because you didn't get to notice, next thing you know, you get a notice with penalty. And then you call them up and they go, oh, yeah, sorry about that, but you know, got lost in the shuffle. So this alleviates your liability for their error. Right?
Yes, so this is, this is only an event of a new taxpayer not receiving a tax bill that they can apply for this alleviation of penalty for the first year. With the understanding that it'll be rectified and it won't happen again. So again, this is strictly a housekeeping ordinance based on PA, new PA law. And the current ordinance does state that if you don't receive a bill, it doesn't alleviate you of paying the tax. But PA has granted this leniency period for one year. Did I get it all right, Steve?
You did. I'll just add that this is honestly a situation that would typically only arise in a handful of situations in any given tax year to to no situations, so it's not a common occurrence, this is just a a method that anybody that gets stuck in this situation, you'll have, you'll still owe the taxes, but you'll you'll get relief on the penalties because it arguably wasn't your fault.
In in reality, and speaking to the tax collector, more often than not, we get paid by both the mortgage company and the taxpayer and have to refund it, so it's it it happens more in the reverse than it does in this situation.
And that's typical in most communities, but it's not a regular occurrence. All right, you're welcome. Any other comments from council? Seeing none, any comments from the public? See no takers in the room, anybody online? I don't think we have any members of the public online at this point. Okay. That being said, the public hearing on tentatively identified ordinance fifteen thirty is closed.
Thank you. Moving along on our agenda, next up is any public comment on agenda items only. If you're here, come on up, you have five minutes, give us your name and address and same online, if you're interested in giving any public comment, please put your name and address in the chat box. Don't see anybody here, anyone online, okay, moving on. Next up, the meeting minutes from our November fourteenth meeting, we're in everyone's packet. Does anyone have any edits or changes to those? Anyone online is because I can't see Jason and Carolyn, but they're on there, right? Okay. Okay, hearing none, the floor is open for a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion. Move to approve the following minutes, minutes each member of council from the meeting of town council, November fourteen, twenty twenty two.
We have a second?
Second, second.
Kathy, okay, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Nope, okay. Motion carries. Now we'll do reports of committees, Mr. Casey, could you run us through administration and finance?
Certainly. Everybody should have had the opportunity to go over the checklist in number ten, are there any questions? Then I'd like to make a motion to approve checklist in number ten dated October first, twenty twenty two to October thirty first, twenty twenty two totaling one million five hundred and thirty five thousand nine hundred and twenty one dollars and thirty nine cents as submitted to each member of council and posted on the bulletin board and town website.
A second? Okay, Carolyn. Is there any questions? Before we vote? No? Okay, everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, Mr. Casey, continue on.
Now, Mr. Trish, would you give us the dashboard report?
So you received the financial dashboard and financial statements in your report for October thirty first, the ten months ending. As you can see from the front page of the dashboard, we are at eighty seven percent of the budget for revenue. We are at sixty seven percent, almost sixty eight percent for expenditures. The expenditures budget to actual is consistent with prior year. We are a bit ahead, we're more than a bit ahead in revenues from prior year. Most of that has to do with over and above collections from real estate transfer tax. We anticipate that that will drop off with the change in the interest rates. But we do have, we have met that budget at a hundred and nineteen percent as of October thirty first. We're about about a million and a half ahead of where I would anticipate us to be at this time. Just as an update, in November, we do have increased dis- dispersments because we do the transfer to CIP in November, and so that million two additional will be transferred from CIP in November over and above your normal expenditures. So where you see the three million dollar net profit, for lack of a better term, that number will be eaten into between now and the end of the year. That number will then be used in twenty twenty four for funding of CIP, so anything that we make over and above expenditures this year will be used to fund the investment for CIP in future years. All the departments are falling within the anticipated expenditures. I'm hoping we don't have any more snow callouts. If anyone has any questions, I am happy to answer them at this time. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is a communications report.
A communications report from John was in your packet, if any questions, let me know.
Questions, liaison reports? Dr. Roper? McCandless Industrial Development.
There was no meeting this far.
Okay. And President Tarrell, North Hills Council and Governments?
The meeting minutes and agendas in your packet, really the big one was that we passed the budget for next next year.
Good. Any public comment on administration and finance committee items? If not, then I will turn the table over to Ms. Zachary.
Staff reports, planning director. Good evening, I have the directive to keep it short, so I'll be quick. We only had one plan that was reviewed at the November Planning Commission meeting, it was, it's it's called the Bowler Plan, you may have seen this a couple of times earlier in the year. It is a four lot subdivision being proposed off of Willoughby Road and Harmony Drive. Previously, the applicant had withdrawn that plan to just take some more time to address the engineer's comments outside of that tight timeline that the state planning code gives us to approve things. So they're back at it for another round, and we are waiting on the review letter for some revisions that occurred in the last month because that plan was tabled in November, so it's a little early for us to know exactly how that's going to go at the next meeting, I'm getting the review letters from the town engineer, you know, as this week progresses. But they will at least be on the agenda again for December. We've actually got a pretty busy agenda for December, so if any of these things interest you, stay tuned. A Starbucks to reuse ninety five Blazer Drive where the old PNC bank was, they did receive a variance to knock out a couple parking spaces from their minimum requirement. But they also have to go through the planning condition, commission as a condition of that zoning hearing board approval, so if you're interested in coffee, do do stay tuned for that, we are also expecting a discussion of the ridge. We were waiting on revisions for the last couple of months. Have made it to that point, again, haven't seen the review letter yet, so not sure if it'll make it to your desks, you know, in in the second December meeting. But that will be discussed at next week's planning commission meeting, and we also have a rezoning request at ten four ten and ten four eighteen Perry Highway. That parcel actually is split zoned right now, it's a bit of an odd thing that we're definitely not going to be doing in the new zoning map. But as it stands, some of the properties in the Wexford flats have the front portion of that property zoned as C three, which is our highway commercial district, and the back half still zoned as R two, which is our most common residential district, so they are requesting to convert that entire parcel. Um so they are requesting to convert that entire parcel um to the C three zone. Um to potentially expand one of the uh Schultz dealership locations. So that is going to be discussed for the first time at December Planning Commission. Not totally sure, you know, when that public hearing will occur, but probably sometime within the next two months, just depending on when that gets out.
What are the addresses again?
Uh ten four ten and ten four eighteen Perry Highway.
Thank you.
Um so, moving on from. The Planning Commission meeting items, um again, just being brief, work continues on the zoning and Sado modernization project. Um we have delivered four out of the six major chapters to the Planning Commission. This out of being treated essentially as a. Chapter, even though it's technically a separate ordinance. Point being, it's, we've delivered two of these big chunks of the document. At each meeting, they have a couple of weeks to get their comments back to us. Um in January, we will be bringing a complete revision. With, you know, of course, the consultants' recommendations, their comments considered. Um and we will have one of the consultants there to discuss that with the Planning Commission members. From the feedback that we get on that revision and that meeting, you know, at that point, the revisions are going to have to be pretty minor. Because we've got, you know, a month um in between, but we're looking at. Uh February being the final draft delivery and hopefully getting a recommendation from the Planning Commission. Um you know, up or down ahead of the open house event, which is February sixteenth. It's a Thursday, four to eight PM, same as the last open house. That's going to be the public's opportunity to. You know, discuss with the consultants what we've put out with the final draft, which will be on the canvas and me and, you know, posted in all the normal places. Um so we are looking at getting this to council potentially by mid-March or April. Um and hopefully adoption soon thereafter. So if anyone has any questions, happy to answer them.
I guess I had one, I guess it'd be Ms. Zachary because she sits in the meetings. Does the planning commission feel that they're, they have enough time to digest this information, that they're getting everything they need? And that they're fully involved in the, in the process?
I have heard no complaints at all. I will, I will say the first chunk that we gave them, which was the the uses chapter. I mean, it was lengthy, you know, but I I'm on the same timeline to read the stuff. Uh as they are, which I usually do in the evening. So I feel their pain. Um but the the last two chapters were a little bit easier to digest.
We want to get it right. We don't, yeah, we're not raised, we might get it right. Thank you.
Right, uh thank you. Zoning Hearing Board, Councilmember Clinton.
Thank you. The minutes from the September and October hearing were in your packet. And um wanted to also let you know that there will be no meeting in December. There's been no requests. So if you have any questions. That concludes the zoning hearing board.
Are there any public comments on the um planning and zoning committee items for anyone present? Anyone online? All right, that concludes this committee. Um Councilmember Schwager, Recreation Committee?
Thank you. Uh first up, we have the Activities Advisory Committee. Um you guys have those, the meeting notes from that. The biggest thing uh that they had discussed was the preparations for the winter festival that's coming up this Saturday. Um I will say there's one thing I think we need to add on to a future agenda, and that would be to discuss. The pickleball tennis courts and basketball courts. Um I've had numerous residents reach out to me and asking me. Why they're not going to be open uh for the winter on warm days when we have no snow for them to use. So I think council should probably discuss that and think about it. Um are there any questions, by the way?
So the pickleball courts, you wanted to chat through that, Ca- Carolyn?
Yes, or can we do that now, or should we put on the schedule for another meeting?
Well, winter's upon us. The the brief, we, they're not open because when we do the snow removal, it damages the court. Or if someone doesn't, professional doesn't do it, it damages the court. Give us the.
Yeah, the, the new newly refinished pickleball and tennis court. Um you know, with the warranty that was on it, we were told do not, so we do not use any blades to push snow off. Do not use brooms on it. So because that has happened in the past, um on those, we decided to just keep it close to the winter. At least through this year, and then our plan was in the spring to do a grand opening. Uh with the fact that it just got finished at the end of October, we weren't able to actually use them before the, the first um. So November, because generally speaking, the parks close during the winter month starting in November, because we closed the bathrooms up. Um obviously, the outside facilities are there, but the, we, we are technically, the park is closed, so. Um that's where we went with that decision. It was the best one to get through this year. And the hope was our Public Works Activities Committee. Administration would revisit it um next spring, summer fall, and adjust the needs.
And do they want to counsel feel that?
Sure, um I was just hoping that maybe the Activities Advisory Committee could maybe work with um John and. Getting a nice little information flyer out um online and so forth, because it is a big interest and for a lot of our. Community, community here. Um just to answer the question of why. Uh Carolyn, I'm not sure if there's something the Activities Advisory Committee could do to make a statement or like a little graphic or something like that that can go on our Instagram. And so on. And also, just in terms of the grand opening, I hope that the Activities Advisory Committee be part of that. Process as well. Maybe they could get started if you have a date in mind so that they can get working on that. I see that it's a great project for the AAC.
Yeah, I definitely want to work with them and um. I I want to, you know, thank our partners that helped make that grant possible that we could make that happen too.
Not a pickleball. Is there a season that we're interfering with?
Anytime that it's in theory nice out, you'd like to use.
Yeah.
If you could play pickleball, if it's dry, it's, it's no much different than a tennis court.
Yeah.
At the end of the day. It's like a wiffle ball. So.
When is the plan to open?
Uh we were looking for the spring, so I think our expectation was in March.
So I guess my point was, and what other residents have pointed out to me, is there are plenty days in the winter months that pop up and it's sunny. There is no snow on the courts. It's fifty, sixty, seventy degree, even eighty we've had. And they want to be able to, you know, utilize the basketball courts, tennis courts. And I completely agree with them. We should have these open so they can go out, be outdoors, enjoy. The fluky one or two warm days we make in a row or three days. I don't think they should be closed. Obviously, I completely agree. We should not let anyone shovel any snow off. Um if there is snow, it shouldn't be opened. But I still think we should consider having those open on warm sunny days. I'm sorry, what did you say?
I was asking Brian, when we, we have cameras on the court?
Oh, I couldn't hear you. Okay, good.
Nothing will be done this winter. Can we all continue on or do it where we? Kathy, do you have an opinion?
I, I have to go with the contract. When we put something in like that and they tell you not to use it for the first year. Because of your warranty, you have to go along with that or you'll have damage throughout the year. I I understand what they're doing. I would like to see the residents be able to use it, but we're going to lose the warranty and it's not worth. Opening of the show.
Yeah. Jack, Kathy, any?
I agree.
Okay, yeah, it sounds like we're stay the course. I guess just communicate and. Try to open it as soon as everybody allows, if it's March one or if it's whatever.
If we have, you know, the, the ability to close and open them on weekends and all that, I think we would be looking at it a lot differently, but with a limited ability to do that at this point. Um that's where I I still think that's our, you know, best option to get through this winter. And I think that's a conversation that I want to have with Carolyn and the AC. And for next winter and and address it properly.
Okay, all right, Carolyn, do you want to continue?
Um sure, so next up, hold on, sorry, I have to, I'm working off of two screens here. Um okay, so next up, we have Trish's, the um the finance, finance development promotional committee for the Heritage Center.
Thank you. Um just to stay brief, because we will be discussing the Heritage and Cultural Center quite a bit this evening. Um I'll leave our questions for whenever we have our committee here, if that's okay with council. Yeah, thank you.
Can any public comments for the Recreation Committee meeting?
Anyone here in person want to make comments on recreation? Anyone online? Nope. Okay, thank you, Carolyn.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Town Manager's Report.
A copy of my Town Manager's Report was in the packets. If you have any questions or comments, please let me know.
Anything from council? Nope. Okay, very good, thank you. Attorney's report.
My report was also in the packet and uh we are having an executive session after the meeting tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions there.
Thank you. Uh all business, uh we did have another award reapportionment meeting. RJ, do you want to? Just update everybody?
Yeah, sure.
You know, we don't need the fancy graphics.
I didn't have anything on hand, so I'm not going to hit you with a PowerPoint. Um yeah, just real simple. I think, was it a couple of weeks ago, November fifteenth? Maybe, I think, I think it was the fifteenth. Um we held a quick uh meeting of the reapportionment committee. Um and just discussed what we learned with the county, which is basically they have to tack to the census block lines, even if we don't. So just a couple minor alterations that would literally affect, I think, three houses, we figured out. Um we would have to revert back to that version that was originally presented to the committee um in the spring. And then we had tweaked it before we brought it to you all, so um everyone was okay with those changes. And at December nineteenth, we will be back here um for the public hearing, just to kind of, you know, check the boxes again. Um like I said, I'm not going to hit you with the whole numbers presentation. It'll just be a quick. Here's where we landed on the map and um then it will be on the agenda for your consideration, January ninth.
And you can have the map in our packet for that.
Oh, yes, 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 yeah, that'll, that'll be available and we'll post it online and everything. Yeah.
Any questions for RJ? Okay, thank you. Next up, under new business. I think this was uh reworded slightly with, this is really a motion, correct, Brian?
Yeah, this is a a motion to accept the retirement of Sergeant Brian Madden and K nine Officer Joy who. Is is with us tonight, but we're going to do something a little nicer and better for on December twelfth.
So, so just for the, the legal part, do we have to do, can we just use the term motion? To accept the rest, the retirement, we don't need to.
We know the thing.
Yes, uh December eighteenth will be Sergeant Madden's last.
Okay. Very good. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Um make a motion, move to accept the retirement of Sergeant Brian Madden. And K nine Officer Joy effective December eighteen, twenty twenty two. Second.
Second, Carolyn. Okay, any questions before we vote? Everybody in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Sergeant Madden and K nine Officer Joy, thank you for your service. Like Brian said, we're going to have a little more formal. Uh uh send off at our, at our next meeting before your retirement. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh next up, uh just a notification of a public hearing on December eighth, twenty twenty two. On the twenty twenty two budget reappropriation, because that'll be coming up on the eighth. Uh next up, I'm sorry.
On um. It'll be on December twelfth.
I'm just going to say.
December twelfth is the next meeting. Okay, do I have to read that again? Okay, the notification of a public hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty two, on the twenty twenty two budget reappropriate. Okay, thank you. Uh next up, there were some sidewalk improvement bids included in your packet. Um does anyone have any questions of, of Brian on those? I think there's a letter.
Yeah, um just like curious, is it typical to see such a vast spread in these bids? It was just remarkable to me.
I've seen that before in paving too. I think sometimes uh when someone goes to bid, they know it's a government job and throw a number out there and hope maybe. They'll take it. I've also seen some that are overextended at that point when they actually make the bid. Uh they'll. Just make the bid real high and they'll have to third party, have someone else come in and do it, so. Um not that surprising, but I think the lowest bid uh is also currently doing work in the town, so it's uh makes more sense for them to. Find a way to make their cost a little bit lower.
With my next question, which um. The items fifteen through nineteen seem very lowly budgeted, like um this would include. Moving gas lines and the repair dig. For that.
Um so, I mean, those, those unit prices are, that's the bid that was received.
Okay.
Um so that is what their, the contractors estimated. Um so that's really what they're held to, to do those jobs.
Okay.
Uh the only change orders would be if something changed in the actual field that either added materials or changed the scope of the work.
Okay, great.
Uh our engineers here tonight, did you have any specific questions?
No, I just, I just want those numbers just. I don't want to see change orders on those numbers, yeah.
Okay, uh the floor is up. So there was a memo from Gateway in the packet on a recommendation for a ward, I believe. So the, the floor is open for a motion.
What's the name of the? A Maranti Contract Incorporated. And the lowest bid amount was three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and zero cents.
Okay. I'll make a motion if that's all right with you, Mike.
Please.
Motion to award the state Route nineteen Perry Highway Sidewalk Improvement Project to A Maranti. For the total contract amount of three hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and zero cents.
Heard somebody over here was hitting Tricia, okay. Okay, um any questions before we vote? Nope, okay, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Nope. Okay, motion carries. Uh next up, uh we do these all the time. The Sisters of Divine Providence has gotten to a point. Where we can reduce the, the uh the bond. Is there any questions uh regarding this, this matter? Nope, okay, seeing none. The floor is open for a motion.
Motion. Motion to approve partial release of bond reduction, question number two, submitted by the Sisters of Divine Providence. For their new residential facility. Projected the amount of seven hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and eighty-three, as recommended by a town engineer's review. Letter dated November twenty first, twenty twenty two.
Thanks, Carolyn. Any questions from council? Okay, uh uh everybody in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Uh next up is another bond reduction uh for what, eighty-five hundred Thompson Run Road Apartments. Does anybody have any specific questions for our engineer or? Or our town manager before we open the floor for a motion? Hearing none? Or is open for a motion?
Make a motion.
Please.
Motion to approve a partial release of bond reduction request number two, submitted by Pole Construction Incorporated for the. Eighty-five hundred Thompson Run Road Apartments project in the amount of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars, twenty-three cents. As recommended by the Town Engineers Review Letter dated November twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
A second? Dr. Rock. Any questions before we vote? Nope, okay, everybody in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh next up, you want to tee that one up for us, Brian? It's the South.
South Hills Council of Governments, uh as uh we often participate with the North Hills Council of Governments, uh we. Get together as municipalities for purchasing power. That's how we purchase our salt. And um this uh this particular contract, the South Hills Council of Governments puts out for fall commodities and. There's a long list of things that they put to, out to bid. The ones that McCandless uses are listed here with the um. Mostly like bagge dice and and snow melt and things related to um smaller versions of salt and then some gasoline, diesel fuel and other oils.
So this, you're allowed to go either to here or even to another organization or another vendor. So, this, you're allowed to go either to here or even to another organization or another vendor if the price is better.
We can still go anywhere for where we need. If the price is best, we can use Co-Stars, we can use, uh, multiple things, but we participate in this and this lets us use that set price through the extent of the contract.
Very good. Okay. Any questions before we open the floor for a motion? Hearing none? Okay, would anyone like to entertain a motion?
Sure, I will.
Mr. Casey?
Motion to approve the South Hills Area Council Government's Fall Commodities Bid for bagdies and snowmelt, calcium chloride, gasoline, diesel fuel and lubricants.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Carolyn. Uh, any questions before we vote? Nope. Okay, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, next up is our calendar for next year. There's really any comments or questions?
I just have one comment. Um, I'm happy to see that the Heritage Center, Ha- Hedge Center and Cultural Center will be moving their meetings to the site. Um, but I wanna make sure that we will be, still be able to have the virtual option for people to attend those mood meetings out of the Heritage Center. Will we be able to do that, you think?
Technology wise or?
Yeah.
With us approving this, just technology?
Technology wise. I mean, it may be something we, you know, work through as we get there too.
I would like to continue that somehow, some way, so, um, let's try to find a way to make that happen.
I mean, I've done it. I think that the group is small enough, we may be able to do it with a laptop.
That's what I was thinking.
Make it happen, but just wanna make sure. Okay, thank you.
Good. Any other questions about our twenty twenty-three calendar? Okay, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve tentatively identified resolution number twenty-two of the twenty-two two thousand twenty-two setting dates of various meetings of the town council and other town agencies for the year of twenty twenty-three.
Second.
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 Casey, okay. Um, any questions about this? Okay. Everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nope, okay, motion carries. Okay, next up, uh, signage at the Heritage and Cultural Center. Do we have a? We see these on the screen or?
I'm not seeing on the screen. Uh, in your documents, you should have been.
A question between the two of us.
Sure.
Um, at the NIDA uh, you came and asked for some funding.
Yes, I did.
Remember, they asked for free bids? And you were supposed to just check the planning and zoning condition, was that done?
We've done all those things.
It's all been cleared. Smart shit. Very good.
Okay.
What you got in your packet was a proposal for three different signs. The first one is not with our zoning. And that would have been this twenty-foot sign going up. There's a second proposal that we requested uh, that council accept, and it's the second option. It actually does give us an LED screen. We do realize that council has objections to the colored screen. But if you look in between the options of two and three, the third option actually has us manually changing letters going out in the weather and unlocking and carrying letters out and it would be not only inconvenient, but in specific times during the year, it's been dangerous. But what we're asking for is the LED screen, which is option number two. And we are asking, and we are giving you our word that we're only gonna use black and not gonna be a colored screen. Are there any exceptions?
I think everyone's trying to dig through the packet and see.
This doesn't seem to cost that we're doing lots.
No, it does not.
Not, uh, it's different.
Yeah, the MIDA is funding it, and there's no.
Right.
Yeah.
If you, if you.
Gave them a certain amount of money, it was not received.
No, no, what they asked for was us to reappear in front of them with the final tally.
Right.
And we will do that.
Remember, we made a thing that participated time not to exceed a certain.
Yeah, and we're not exceeding any one of those things. Furthermore, we're not going to be using public works. We made the decision then collectively with town administration that it's much cleaner if we utilize a contractor rather than use public work.
Can you tell us what page those signs are on?
Page of what?
It's not in your strategic plan.
It's not in the strategic plan.
In our packet.
Okay, okay, okay.
That's.
I'm looking for some of this stuff to look.
Yeah.
I, I can look it up. I just thought maybe it was in here. That's fine.
So this one is.
I just remember one, two, and three.
It's like page ninety-three in the packet.
Yeah.
You're passing.
Yeah. Those.
So the digital side, I have some questions. So the digital sign would just have one message on it all the time?
Yes, and it can be changed and it can, it can be rotated via time if you wish. But specifically, you know, we're hopeful to have this signage being able to be changed from either town hall or the Heritage Center rather than have our volunteers on the elements unlocking signage in order to change manual signs.
Mr. Wall, this is Councilman Singer, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
You're, you're currently using a sign in a similar location, it's a sandwich board type of sign, correct?
Yes. It would be a little, it would be different than that, Mr. Singer. Because there, the sandwich board side faces Ingomar Road, well, one, one the front of the side faces Ingomar Road. This is a two-sided sign. So you can see it either going east or west on Ingomar Road.
Thank you, sir.
So I did a little research on mid-block signage and there's quite a bit of, um, research that says that, um, it causes mid, mid-block means like not at a stop sign, not at a light, but just as you're driving by. That it actually, uh, distracts drivers and takes their eyes off the road and there's increased incidents associated with mid-block signs. So, I, all the signs that I am aware of are like this are where people are stopping at a light and they're, don't have anything else to do, still looking at the sign. So I'm concerned about state safety there. There's a playground there, there's a, um, workout area there. Um, there's a ball field there, so I'm concerned about distracted driver.
Oh, I understand your concern to the point where I dri- drove through McCandless um, and noticed that the town and the planning commission has approved a lot of mid-block sign.
Where, where are those?
Well, one is Chuck's Auto Body right on Perry Highway. Can't get much more traffic than you get right there.
So we should just distract drivers more than?
I don't think.
I think this is a safety issue. I, I am against mid-block signs. I don't like.
Yeah, but it's about, it, 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 the North Park Church too.
I I'm giving you my opinion. This is the town's sign next to a park. I think it is unsafe there. I don't like a modern sign in front of a schoolhouse, a one-room schoolhouse from the nineteenth century. I think the design is all wrong for that. So, I, and the other thing too is that we are in the middle of rewriting our sign ordinance. Seems like the timing on this that we should wait on this and see what our new ordinance says and see if this complies. Maybe, maybe it complies and then you don't even have to ask. But we're in the middle of writing new sign ordinance, so why don't we just get that and those are my comments.
In our meetings with town administration, it included RJ. And we went through what the, the zoning is now or the, the rules are now and what they are proposed to be after the rules have been changed. I think you're going to find that this meets e- either of it.
Well, I have proposed that on protected areas, there are not electronic signs. And this is a, and town property is a protected area. And I've also proposed that, um, electronic signs have to have a certain footage away from the park. And I don't know if that is made it in there, but that would be a concern of both of us.
Probably a hundred and sixty feet, give or take ten from the ball field. Um, you know, I, look, I understand your concern. No, but the fact that the matter still remains, then promoting what you've asked us to do a job. Promoting the Heritage Center and promoting the Cultural Center. It's part of what we do. And giving us the tools in which to do it seems only the right thing to do, especially since we've gone out and found the funds from an auxiliary source other than the tax coffers. Strongly urge the improved option two. Thank you very much.
Uh, with more questions.
Could I? Can I make a comment? No.
Okay, yes, please, Carolyn.
Um, I, I personally don't see how the sign is gonna benefit or do any more beneficial things for the Heritage Center, only because I've been thinking about this for a few weeks and sure, you know, I've looked at different signs around town and I, I have to actually make a point to look at them, like, hey, look, the sign's coming up. And I compare that to the normal everyday life where I'm not looking for signs. We're too busy in the car. We're, I'm either on the phone, my kids are talking, there's so many distractions between kids in the car. You know, when you drive by that sign, you may look for a split second, but you're not gonna read the whole message, because that is a busy road and as Ken pointed out, there's batting cages, there's the field, there's, I, I just think there's too much going on in the area. I just don't think anyone's gonna have the time to look down and to read that sign. And I don't know how many, like, lines there will be, you know, it depends on your message, but I just don't feel that that's the way to promote things for the Heritage Center. I think we should be doing things more online where we're gonna really.
We do everything, we do everything online right now.
No, no, I know, but I'm saying I think that's where we need to continue going rather than putting the sign up. I'm, I don't, I don't support the sign, so that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
This is Councilman Singer again.
Go ahead, Jason.
Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I, I just, you know, I, I think I, I struggle a little with, you know, the park proximity, you know, we recently installed a fitness court and allowed UPMC to plaster their name and their logo all over the fitness court in that same area for advertising purposes. You know, and we have a, a town sanctioned, um, you know, history cultural center that, that's looking to do something that they're already doing with sandwich board signs and everything else else here. Um, you know, we're getting into the weeds here on messaging and everything else about this. You know, I, I, I think the fact that, you know, we need to be able to identify our resources around here i- in, in, be able to do that, and it, it's kind of hard for me to say no when we allowed a private company to plaster their name on a fitness court a hundred fifty feet away. That, that's my opinion, you know, in that I'll make a motion at this moment, uh, to approve the proposed style number two at the location signified at the Heritage and Cultural Center and no cost to the town of McCandless.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Yeah, I was, yeah.
And having served on the MIDA and Mr. Wall and committee made their presentation, uh, they were drilled pretty heavily. And they were, uh, asked numerous questions. They were well-versed. They were able to answer all the questions. Uh, you know, they took it back and told them they had to have three different bids. They took them back and said go through the planning commission, go through the zoning commission. They had done all of that. I think they've done their due diligence and I would have to support.
Okay. Trish.
Thank you, um. Thank you, Mr. Singer. I had the same thought about the UPMC sign um, in terms of distractability for drivers. I think the fitness court, um, would catch your eye and distract you more than a sign. Um, and Ms. Schwager, when you don't see the benefit, I look at something like, I had to remind myself today what time Winterfest was. But I drive past and once I would get to know that something like Winterfest this Saturday, four to seven, a very simple, brief message was on a sign. I'd almost look for it and say, oh, well, I'll have to re- remind myself to check out when, what time Winterfest starts this Saturday. Um, so I know we've been discussing a sign for the town, a sign for the Heritage and Cultural Center for a long time. Unfortunately, I haven't seen a better option come in front of us as a council in the three years I've been here. And so I too, um, I, I'm an approval of this. I would approve this. Thank you.
Um, I think, I think everyone's had ti- time. My, my only question, who, who has the right to the content? Does it come through John? Uh, our communication?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I think we need to have that control here at the administration office.
They would all.
John coordinates it. He's the quarterback.
John would coordinate it.
Tells them what.
Really, two people that would have access to it would be Abby LaCosta, who is our executive director, or John. So, you know, I, I mean, it's very limited in what it, you know, what the messaging would be.
Yeah.
But that's only limited by you. You could, you can, you know, promote softball signups. You can promote, you know, a, a lot of different things. That would be up to town council.
Yeah. Is, is some, do some community have regulations on what they're allowed to put on the sign, like this? Have you so-and-so's? I, I think.
I'd like to say. We're getting into the.
Have that in place. We, it, you know, it's, it's a town-owned sign. We would control the messaging. We could set a policy if we wanted, but I think it would only be internal things. Yeah.
Okay.
So would policy also include, um, the signage being in black and white only and not colors, or would we need to make that part of this motion?
My, my motion too is, it is, it was black and white.
I think that should be part of the motion.
Okay.
Okay. Any, okay, so, go ahead.
I echo. No, okay, that's, yeah. I echo Councilwoman Boone's comments, but I'd like to add one more. I would someday like to see some welcome to McCandless signs at our gateway areas. So maybe if this could maybe incorporate that a little bit, but I mean, really nineteen and McKnight areas would, I think, uh, that's, that's, uh, Councilwoman Schwager's idea, and I think that's a great idea. And I'd like to second Jason's motion.
Very good. So do we need to read, read that? Because did it say black? Is black and white in the motion important?
Yes, but Mr. Singer just.
Mr. Corville, is it, isn't that an administrative issue for the town manager? Because that's how you administer the sign. And we come through town council.
Yeah.
So it may have to direction town council.
I get it.
The manager.
Okay.
It could be, yes, but if council's desire is to restrict sign to black and white, then I'm sure it suggests that they include it in motion.
Okay.
Yeah. And currently it is included in the motion, because.
It is, Mr. Singer indicated as such, and Mr. Casey has said.
Okay, very good. Okay. Um, so uh, there's a motion on the table to approve. So, uh, everyone in favor, signify by saying aye.
Would there be any comment from citizens?
No, this was only.
Uh, we could certainly take that if.
I don't know if there are any, but usually we ask.
Are there any comments from those in the attendance here on the, before we vote? Or those online? No? Okay, seeing none? Okay, uh, everyone in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Do we, do we need to roll call vote, or is the? We know it's five-two.
Roll call vote.
I think I would do a roll call.
Roll call. Do you wanna do the one, two, three?
You wanna do, that's how you do it?
Yep.
No, this is Brian's first time.
Councilwoman Zachary?
Nay.
Councilman Casey?
Yes.
Councilman Singer?
Yeah.
Councilman Carl?
I should go last. Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Rappa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinton? Schwager?
Nay.
Councilwoman Clinton?
Yes.
Councilman Tara? Yes.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes. I'm gonna do that one. Okay, uh, next up, some housekeeping motions is that we need to have, uh, Okay, uh, next up, some housekeeping motions is that we need to have uh Brian as our designated agent for some of these uh. Uh, PMA and FEMA. Paperwork, so. Um, is there any specific questions uh about that before we open the floor for a motion? Okay, floor is open for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the authorization of town manager Brian O'Malley as the designated agent for the town of McCandless for applications related to the Pennsylvania. Emergency Management Agency and the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
Second, Mr. Casey. Uh, any comments before we vote? And questions, okay, everyone in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, here now, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have four appointments. The first one is for the Heritage and Culture Center.
Um, to make a motion, please. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Vanita Sundararaman to the Heritage and Cultural Center Financial Development and Promotional Committee. For a full term to expire December thirty one, twenty twenty six.
We have a second. Dr. Rappa? Okay, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, very good, welcome to the committee, thanks for volunteering. Okay. Uh, next up, we have three for the Personnel Board, Carolyn, are you, could you hand these?
Yep, got them. Motion to appoint Justin Amino to the Personnel Board for a full term to expire August thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Okay, we have a second. Oh, okay, that was so sorry, uh, second by Dr. Rappa. Uh, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay.
Motion to appoint Bradley Kaiser to the Personnel Board as an alternate member for a partial term to expire August thirty first, twenty twenty three.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Second by Mr. Casey. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to appoint Cynthia Smith to the Personnel Board as an alternate member for the full term to expire twelve thirty one, twenty five.
Second, Mr. Casey. Everyone in favor of the signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No, okay, motion carries. Uh, next up, some housekeeping, um, Dr. Benkot has won election to report to the state legislature. So he is relinquishing his position. Uh. Floor is open for a motion to accept his resignation.
Motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Arvin Bencat from the MFPPA effective twelve thirty one, twenty twenty two.
Okay, do we have a second? And second, Dr. Rappa, everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, motion carries, good luck in Harrisburg, Arvin. Um, okay, last up, the Heritage Center has a a presentation about their strategic plan, but.
Good evening. Amy, are we able to get the, the presentation, okay? Okay, thank you. Good evening, members of town council. The McCandless Northern Allegheny. Heritage and Cultural Centers Year in Review for twenty twenty two was presented to you before the conclusion of the year. To show the immense strides we have taken to make the HCC a viable and thriving center in our community. To say it has been a transformative year for the HCC is an understatement. After revising our mission and adding a clear vision statement, undertaking a strategic plan, revamping our social media presence. Increasing visitation, changing our name to reflect the changing dynamics of our region. Creating an outreach program, holding multiple fundraising events, and improving our vis- visibility and presence in the community. The future success of the organization is clear. We have been able to make remarkable changes in a short amount of time and see the HCC as a developing regional asset in our community. Our focus in twenty twenty two was on programming outreach, fundraising, and changing expectations. And we believe we've been extremely suc- successful. We are energized and excited to begin implementing our strategic plan once it is approved by this governing body and are extremely proud of the groundwork we have laid. To build upon our successes in twenty twenty three and beyond. I won't go through our entire seventy page binder that that we gave you, but I will highlight um some important data points and topic. So our donations for um twenty twenty two. Are up one thousand three hundred and forty-four percent over last year. Our visitation is up two hundred and ninety-six percent, and our volunteer hours have increased by sixty-three percent. Uh, on the second page there, there are some other notable stats. We've reached over forty-five thousand people on Facebook. We've accessioned over a hundred and seventy objects. We've reached almost two thousand visitors this year. And the big numbers uh in donations are forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars in in-kind donations. We've raised over fifty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. In early twenty twenty two, the executive members of the FDPC, along with Carolyn Keller, who's here this evening, of Curio four one two. Constructed a new mission statement to reflect the changing initiatives of the Heritage Center and added a vision statement to outline our future. With the help of Carolyn, our museum consultant. The executive members of the FDPC also assembled a group of stakeholders, volunteers, and community members as a part of a strategic planning committee. And met for five working sessions through the summer, and we outlined the goals for the next three to five years, and that. Full um strategic plan is attached at the end of the report. We took thoughtful consideration to include a range of committee members. Who gave perspectives from various angles. Their input was essential to understanding our current perception and planning for messaging going forward. The HCC changed its name this year. We went from Heritage Center to Heritage and Cultural Center and also changed our structure. In August of twenty twenty two, we petitioned, we petitioned this um town council to change the name of our facility. And the request was made for the purpose of being more appealing to philanthropic organizations as well as granting organizations. By adding to the name to include Cultural Center, we're being more inclusive and more welcoming to the changing demographics of our region. Early on in twenty twenty two, the FDPC Executive Committee realized that there was a need to upgrade and change our structure. To better reflect the organization after the original five-year existence. We also wanted to restructure our organization to better reflect our mission and vision, making us more recognizable as a charitable, not-for-profit organ- organization. We exa- established an executive director, changed the name of our facility, and changed the scope of our programming. And have expanded our FDPC board to reflect the changes in demographics of the region. In your packet, I've also listed every event that we have done this year. I won't go through them um. One by one, but with a monthly lecture series and many special events throughout twenty twenty two, the HCC shared our history with more visitors than ever before. Focusing on topics which were relevant, community-minded, and in line with our new mission statement. We hosted sellout events which needed a second showing added to accommodate demand. Our growing partnerships with other local municipalities has expanded our audience and capability of bringing in new topics and speakers. An online registration system for events helps us track and keep in touch with our visitors, and surveys are taken after the events to help us plan for the future. This year, we hosted twenty-three events at or in support of the center. We want to create a dynamic place for members of our community to further their understanding of the area we call home. We strive to create programming, exhibitions, events, and relationships which help our visitors better understand our collective history. It's our hope that the HCC will grow to expand, our reach to new audiences, continue to add important pieces to our collection. And tell the narrative of our region through the objects and stories of those who have gone before us. Um, if you flip all the way to the end with of the events to outreach. The success of our programming and collaborative process within the FDPC provided the confidence to reach out. To the business community in an attempt to capture corporate partnership opportunities. Our outreach for financial assistance with programs has been met with very positive results. After additional consultation with the FDPC and Town Council. The decision was made to move forward, making the McCandless Northern Allegheny Heritage and Cultural Center more of a regional asset. Enabling the entity to attempt assess. Accessing county, state, and federal funding based upon the designations of its capabilities. The organization began to make changes in its structure to realize the nonprofit status. And to attain an Allegheny County Small Games of Chance license. This was done through council by way of proclamation, and a Small Games of Chance license was awarded to the Heritage Center. We developed a tour for both adults and students. Proposals were sent to all the surrounding care homes and senior citizen communities, and I've. And schools, and I've built relationships with Anthology and Ashton Commons. Will continue to offer outreach opportunities both on-site and remotely for our community members. We've also hosted the Boy Scouts for tours. I did an outreach um presentation at LaRoche for the AAUW. Um, we've hosted two class reunions this year. Dan Coyne from our FDPC Committee uh had a presence at the Historic Pittsburgh Fair in Oakland this year, along with Northam Library. Um, Dan is also uh facilitating an oral history project to gather um information about the residents. Um, of our community, and we've had presence at all of the town sanctioned community events this year. Fundraising, the outstanding success we have experienced is certainly a result of the monetary and in-kind donations of which we made account. More importantly, the energy of the Heritage Center, Heritage and Cultural Center comes from the work of gifted, kind, and giving volunteers. These folks have secured the other side of our success, positive interactions with our community. Taking into account volunteer value, in-kind donations and cash donations, the economic impact of the HCC in twenty twenty two. Is well over seventy-eight thousand dollars. McCandless residents have long wondered as they pass by, what's in the Little Red Schoolhouse outside of North Park? As more of them have become aware of the center through word of mouth, local media coverage of our events and paid advertisements. More have walked through the doors and reported having positive experiences. This year, the center hosted more than nineteen hundred attendees for talks. Exhibit debuts and other special events, a two hundred and ninety-six percent increase over twenty twenty one. The FDPC's Outreach Committee has secured well over forty thousand three dol- forty-three thousand dollars of in-kind donations. And these resources are invaluable to the success of our community interactions. Visitor data. Visitation by month. As I mentioned, an estimated nineteen hundred people have attended programs or visited the HCC in the past year. We boosted our visitation and visibility in the community, having a better online presence, advertising of monthly events. Inviting new guests to our fundraisers and being visible and approachable at town sanctioned events have all positively impacted our visitation. We anticipate that this number will continue to grow exponentially in twenty twenty three. In addition, we are adding additional hours will be open from Tuesday and through Sunday next year in twenty twenty three. Uh, with one evening day on Thursday. Social media, Facebook's reach mech- reach metrics. Measure the number of people who saw any content from your page. Or about your page, including post stories, ads, social information from people who interact with your page and more. In twenty twenty two, we've reached over forty-five thousand people online through views, likes, shares, and comments. We've gained over two hundred new followers this year, and daily posts are now the norm. I just did, did one today about Vestal Field, um, found some pictures of boys playing uh baseball there in the sixties, and it's already. One of our most popular posts with the most interactions, so. Um, the most important part of our. Of our Heritage and Cultural Center is certainly our volunteers. And the topic most near and dear to my heart, we have some of the most wonderful people in our community as volunteers at the HCC. With a range of backgrounds, life experiences, interests, and expertise, our volunteers are dedicated to the HCC's success in all ways. When visitors realize that the HCC is run completely by volunteers, they are astonished. I'd like to thank my fellow volunteers for all of their hard work. And I'd like to name them too. Lynn Atman, Jerry Offman, Andrew Bench, John Burke Bickler, Claudia Burner. Sheila Brennan, Steve Bullock, Georgette Cordick, Toby Cordick, Dan Coyne, Don Faulkner, Noel Gregary. Richard Hetzel, Diane Ellis, Ruth Jarvis, Cheryl Jehovic, Carolyn Keller, Kevin Kennedy, Cassie Lauer. Carol McAdams, Mary Jo Neff, Anne Newman, Suzanne Schnup, Amy Steele, Jim Vinsky. Joe Wall, Amy Wessel, Janice Zimmer, Connie Pop, Adely Beufinger, Carolyn Hartman, and Andrew McLaughlin. And Chuck Ironman. I keep track of the volunteer hours on a master spreadsheet by month, and those statistics are broken down by month on this graph. According to the Nonprofit Leadership Center, the estimated national value of each volunteer hour. Is twenty, twenty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents, up one dollar and forty-one cents since twenty twenty one. Understanding the value of volunteers to nonprofit organizations is vital. And recognizing the financial value of what is often perceived as free labor. This year, the Heritage and Cultural Center volunteers put in over two thousand two hundred and thirty-five hours of time. Valued at sixty-six thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents in contribution to our community. We've also developed relationships with people in the media. I developed a relationship with Natalie Beneviet at the Trib North Journal, and she's featured events and happenings at the HCC multiple times this year. All of those are listed. Andrew McLaughlin from Nash's Uproar came in to write a story about the North Park Photography Exhibition and left as a volunteer. So I was glad to, glad to meet him as well. Promotional documents we've worked on this year, I created a new trifle pamphlet, which will be printed hopefully for next year. And next year, I plan on developing a coloring book with McCandless uh resident illustrator Janine Birch. We're currently brainstorming on locations and images to feature um both for kids and for adults. Collections also had a big year this year. The McCandless portraits are an a remarkable addition to our permanent collection. And brought it to a new level. This unbelievable gift is remarkable, not only because of its content of Judge Wilson, Wilson McCandless. But also of the artist James Reed Lambden. This year, we also created Joe's Corner and is a lovely tribute to Joe Bullock and his memory. Putting in this dedicated space to remember Joe allows us to honor our beginnings and gives us room to grow into the future. Facilities. We put up a tent outside, as everyone has seen, so that gave us some extra breathing room. We also refurbished refurbished this landscaping project um over the summer, so there are before and after pictures there as well. Um, and finally, I'd like to thank you. Uh, my husband and I moved to McCandless in two thousand and fifteen. And after joining the Heritage Center as a volunteer and the FDPC Committee in two thousand and nineteen. I knew I had found my place in our community. The opportunity to share stories and live in and celebrate history has always been a great joy for me. And redirecting the HCC has certainly been a passion project. Many communities have gyms and meeting rooms, but not many have a celebration of their past provided by their municipality. For the education enlightenment of the public. We have a unique opportunity to grow the HCC into something truly amazing, and I'm proud to be a part of it. Now I'm gonna turn things over to Joe for a look to the future.
Thank you, Amy. I'll keep it, I'm not gonna read anything, he's gonna tell you where we are. You know, we had an architect come in and volunteer some time. And we gave him a wish list. And I I think the pictures are up there in the, in the end. And we decided to give you these pictures just to get you to talk about them. There's nothing imminent. But what we're trying to do is we're trying to make this more a regional asset. McCandless has footed the bill for all this for the last five years. You've been gracious. We're trying to turn it into something. That is bigger. Something that has room to grow. What we'd like to do is, you know, from the change in our name, the Heritage and Cultural Center. We wanna have a performance area. We want to have a catering kitchen, which is a smaller kitchen. We want to have innovation stations from Google and from Yahoo and from Dell. The wall out, students from cradle to grave to enhance their educational opportunities and to enhance their life experience. We are grateful for what you've done this year. Mrs. Zachary, you started this this committee. Thank you very much. Because you have given me a renewed passion in my life. It's been my pleasure to work with each one of you this year. I look forward to the future. Working together, I think there's nothing that we can't do. We are working on intergovernmental agreements because we started talking with other municipalities about joining. That's why we talked about expansion. Having other people help fund this and make it more of a regional asset. We're working on intergovernmental agreements with nine different municipalities. And according to Mr. O'Malley, and he's totally correct. Sometimes it's like herding cats. We're going to try and make it happen. We're going to try and make this the best that it can be. We've already had the, the volunteers. We already have the core people. Mrs. Clinton's been fantastic as a liaison. You've appeared at more things than I, than I ever remember any councilman coming to. And I've received support from Mr. Casey and Mr. Singer, Mr. Carl. Yeah. Seeing you folks at our events is a huge pick-me-up to the people that have volunteered their time. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I do want to point out that our leadership, and I don't mean me, our leadership and Abby LaCosta has been stellar. Not only does she bring a sense of pride, and she brings a, a sense of purpose, but she's legit. She's got the credentials as far as being in charge of the Heritage Center and being in charge of the Cultural Center. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now. Otherwise, we're probably in the second quarter.
Any questions for council for Mr. Wall? No? No.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, happy job. It's a fabulous job, but like, I've never seen an organization going for like that in that sort of a time. So thank you, thank you. Good stuff. Uh, closing everything out, uh, last on the agenda is, is there any non-agenda item comments from those that are here with us tonight or those that are online? Okay. Seeing none. Uh, we are now going to adjourn into executive session to discuss litigation, and no further action will be taken. Thank you.